Good evening. Welcome to the Kent School Board meeting of March 22, 2023. It's six o'clock and this evening we are beginning with an executive session for approximately thirty minutes. The purpose of this executive session is to discuss with legal counsel potential litigation and the legal or financial risks of a course of action. We will return at six thirty for our regular meeting.
(Audio cuts out.)
Celebrating our top ten performer, top ten percent of performers.
Yeah. He's gonna give us a thumb once everybody gets seated.
Well, thank you.
You've served him.
I don't get a crown.
We have a crown.
That's Carol Cleveland. She's a sweetheart. It's a birthday.
All right, let's do this.
Good evening. It's six thirty-two, and this is the regular scheduled meeting of the Kent School Board for March twenty-second, two thousand and three. At this time, I'm going to take role. Vice President Farah.
Present.
Vice, or Director Hamada.
Present.
Director Bell.
He's present.
He is running in.
Running in.
Present.
And Director Margel.
Present.
Okay. Welcome. This is a meeting of the Kent School District Board, which is held in public to comply with the Open Meetings Act. We welcome the public's participation in the board meeting and thank those of you who've come to this meeting and those who are viewing our live stream. The purpose of the board meeting is for the board to conduct its business in public. During the meeting, the board will listen to but not respond to comments from visitors. Individuals with items for the board or superintendent must provide the items directly to the safety officers in the back or because approaching the diastereum, the board meeting is not allowed. Any items turned in will be provided to the board and superintendent following the meeting. Those wishing to comment must compete, complete a comment card and turn it in either before the meeting begins or no later than the beginning of the legislative update. So if you wanted to actually talk to the board, grab a comment card, and it goes in the box on the very back desk back there. No cards will be accepted after we've started the legislative update. Visitors who have completed the comment card indicating desire to speak to an agenda item will be called at that portion of the agenda. There is a brief delay in the live stream audio, and we will allow extra time for you to make your way to the boardroom if you are in an overflow room. When it is your turn to address the board, please state your name at the start of your testimony. Public comments will be heard after the opening, during preliminary communication from the audience at specific agenda items, and during final communication from the audience, students will be the first to speak on any topic. Please limit your remarks to three minutes. You will hear a timer when the three minutes run up. Please do not use any specific names of staffs or students or personal identifiable information. Abusive public comments personally directed towards staff or board members will not be tolerated. The president may interrupt or terminate an individual statement when it is too lengthy, obscene, or irrelevant. Per board procedure, written material to provide board members with background information should be submitted to the superintendent's office with at least one week in advance of the meeting. I'm now going to, and, actually, I'm gonna ask us all to stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, I'm gonna ask Vice President Farah to read the land acknowledgement.
Thank you, President Clark. We acknowledge we are gathered upon the ancestral lands of Makoshut Indian tribe who historically lived throughout the area between the Cascade Mountains and Puget Sound.
Okay, at this time, I'm gonna go ahead and ask Superintendent Bell if there are any changes to the agenda.
President Clark, there is one change to the agenda. The Kent Schools Foundation enrichment grants acceptance will be added to the consent agenda as item nine point one five.
The chair will entertain a motion to adopt the agenda as amended.
I make a motion to adopt the agenda as amended.
I second.
Discussion. Call for the question. All in favor signify by raising your right hand, saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Thank you. All right. We now have some proclamations to go through, and I'll ask Director Hamada to talk to us about the School Retirees Appreciation Week.
All right. I have the privilege of reading that proclamation tonight. Whereas Washington State recognizes the accomplishments of all retired school employees, and whereas it is important to acknowledge the importance of educating and assisting school retirees in meeting the special challenges retirement brings and work to improve their general welfare, and whereas school retirees and organizations like the Washington State School Retirees Association aid in advancing education by supporting high educational standards, and whereas school retiree organizations such as WSSRA promote group and individual involvement in charitable projects and activities, sponsor scholarships, and maintain interest and participation in educational activities, and whereas retired educators are encouraged to remain active in the education profession through volunteer activities associated with learning. Now, therefore, I, Jay Ensley, Governor of the State of Washington, do hereby proclaim March twentieth to the twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-three, as School Retirees Appreciation Week in Washington, and I encourage all people in our state to join in with me in special observance. Signed this fourth day of January, two thousand and twenty-three. Jay Ensley, Governor.
Thank you very much. Okay, Vice President Farah, I believe you have two oh two as a proclamation.
Nice. I have the privilege of reading the Autism Awareness Month proclamation. Whereas autism spectrum disorder is a neurological and developmental disorder that affects communication and behavior, and whereas the Center for Disease Control and Prevention reports that approximately one in four school-aged children has been identified with autism spectrum disorder, and whereas symptoms of autism can result in significant lifelong impairment of an individual's ability to learn, develop healthy interactive behaviors, and understand verbal and nonverbal communication, and whereas applied behavior analysis has come widely accepted among healthcare professionals and used a treatment to improve a variety of skills, and whereas all individuals with autism should be included as valued members of our community, provided that with opportunity and support to live, learn, work, and play as independently as possible. Now, therefore, be it resolved, Kent School District Board of Directors proclaims April, two thousand and twenty-three, as an Autism Awareness Month and encourages all citizens to take time to learn about autism, how individuals with autism can make a difference in the community. Signed this twenty-second day of March, two thousand and twenty-three, by all board directors and Israel Bell, Secretary of the Board.
Thank you very much, and I now invite Director Benno to deal with two oh three, a proclamation.
Thank you. I have the honor of reading the Proclamation for National Occupational Therapy Month. Whereas the American Occupational Therapy Association has declared the month of April to be known as National Occupational Therapy Month, and whereas the profession of occupational therapy makes valuable contributions in helping people live life to the fullest after an injury or illness, and whereas the service of occupational therapy are available to citizens of Kent through hospitals, home health agencies, schools, clinics, and nursing homes, and whereas the health and productivity of our citizens depend upon the effective use of healthcare resources, including the important services of occupational therapists and occupational therapy assistants. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Kent School Board of Directors does hereby proclaim the month of April, two thousand and twenty-three, as Occupational Therapy Month, and calls upon all citizens to recognize the achievements and contributions of these valued health professionals. Signed this twenty-second day of March, two thousand and twenty-three, by the Kent School District Board of Directors and Israel Vella, Secretary to the Board.
Great, thank you very much. All right, we're now to preliminary comments from the audience. And here comes the paperwork. Okay. First thirty-minute students. Okay. So we're gonna start with some students, and first up is Nathan Ingram, who will be followed by Emily DeKirk.
Good afternoon. My name is Nathan Ingram. I am a student at Kentwood and a member of the band. I would like to make a comment about our band program and the funding it needs. Our instruments are getting to the point where I can barely keep up with the maintenance, and especially in the percussion section, most of our marching equipment needs to be replaced. Wow, I lost the rest, but. So I hope in the future for the following students of the Kentwood Band that they have a better opportunity to have, well, better equipment for their instruments and, and are just able to, to have the resources they need to move on with their music career. I yield the rest of my time.
Great, thank you very much. Emily will be followed by Hannah, and we now have Emily DeKirk.
Hello, I'm Alita Clerk. Thank you for letting me speak today. I'm a senior at Kentwood High School, and I've attended KSD schools since kindergarten. In a short three months, I will have graduated and left the Kent School District. I would like to just briefly share my opinion and reflection after nearly completing a full public education. I believe that students are no longer being properly incentivized to behave at Kentwood, and it's likely similar in other Kent schools. I don't know what it's like at other Kent High Schools, but from my perspective, there seems to be an increase in disrespectful conduct. I did a little looking online, and it seems that Kentwood isn't alone in the problem. There are students, or studies looking into the long-term effects of COVID-19 and online learning and what effect that has, that has had on schools, speculating that students may be much less willing to listen to figures of authority and in some cases become violent. However, because the data is so new, nothing conclusive can be said yet about general trends in post-remote learning. However, I would like to briefly mention that Washington State remained in online-only instruction methods longer than almost any other state. It would be difficult for me to produce statistics on the matter, but I believe Kentwood is not doing enough to create an environment where students feel like their choices and behavior matter. By not enforcing its own rules, Kentwood has entitled students to be disruptive without feeling like the consequences of their actions does enough to discourage similar behavior in the future. I'd like to ask that Kentwood does a better job of enforcing its rules in the future to keep our learning environments productive, safe, and healthy. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And Hannah will be followed by Tyler Wu.
Hello, my name is Hannah Capua. I am a senior at Kentwood High School, and I would just like to talk about the seemingly decline in the internet connection quality that I've seen at my school. Starting at the beginning of seen at my school. Starting at the beginning of, like, the year, there seem to be more and more connection issues with the internet and just Wi-Fi in general, which is not good when a lot of lesson plans now rely on the internet and looking up things online. There have gotten points where my teachers have had to replan an entire, like, lesson and day's worth of materials because of the inconsistency with them, and I have lost assignments and lots of work because of the inconsistency and the poor connection. I, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
You're silent.
Hi, my name is Tyler Wu. I'm a senior in Kentwood High School. My concern in the school is the lack of engineering-related classes. I feel like in the four years I have been to Kentwood, I noticed more classes that tend to lean to arts, and I feel like there should be more classes that teaches stuff like how to assemble electronics or how to assemble a mechanical parts and to hopefully prepare students for a engineering field further in post-secondary. That's my concern, and thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Chloe Sun?
Hello. My name is Chloe Sun, and I attend at Kentwood Senior High School. I do want to discuss about special education classes, specifically about the teachers. I believe we need to endorse more qualifications as far as how the adult will be patient, and as, like, are they patient as they say on their resume, or are they just saying that so that they can get the job for the money? I would like for you to think on this, for the children and students who do have special needs. I say this from experience, and I don't have statistics, but I do have sisters who are in these classes, and they, along with their other students and friends, they have distress about how the teachers, they don't treat them well, and they are very sure to anger with them. And I have peer-tutored before in these classes, and I could also say from experience that the teachers are just there to do their job and really don't care for their children, which I know is normal for regular teachers, but as far as, like, special education goes, there should be at least, like, more patience and more knowledge about these students, and they should at least be nicer and better at their job. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Corey Lunsford?
Good evening. My name is Corey Lunsford. I'm a senior at Kentwood High School, and I was wondering if current fifth graders are being successfully prepared for their transition into middle school next year. I don't doubt that a lot of them are stressed and nervous about the transition, and I sincerely hope that their current teachers are helping them get ready in order to have a successful middle school career. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yes, I'm sorry, I left that out. No, do it now, because we want him to go home. Oh, okay. All right. Sorry. David Jameson?
Option to go home. We would love for you to stay.
I'm hi. Sorry, my handwriting's not great. It's Daniel Jameson. My name's Daniel Jameson. I'm a senior at Kentwood High School, and I wanted to talk about the technology we have for our CTE classes. So all four years I've been at Kentwood, I've been in a CTE class, and all four years, there's been issues with monitors not working, not turning on, and breaking. And I know our laptops, we've gotten better laptops over the years, but our monitors and computers in the CTE classes have stayed very much the same, and they're a little older. So I may be leaving in June, but I think it'd be nice for the new people, the younger people at Kentwood, to have technology that can help them succeed in their CTE educations. That is all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. And Tamara Lucretia?
Good evening, members of the Board. Superintendent Bell. I will say, I was not prepared, again, because I don't ever get prepared, but I was on my way home after meeting all day long after being in school, and I did a U-turn because I felt like I needed to be here. First of all, I want to honor all of the students that spoke up here. That's brave of you guys. I honor that. Every time I hear you guys up here, I'm like, I'm going to be able to retire. Thank you. There is a saying by Maya Angelou, and she said, "When someone shows who they are, believe them the first time." And I have to be honest with you, I've been the fool and didn't believe them the first time. I've given time and patience and tried to have understanding. I've let other people co-op what they meant to say, when in fact, what I needed to do was believe what they said. They said what they said, and I need to own that as my own personal deficiency. On the eve of Ramadan, and I will tell the students at Mill Creek Middle School where I work, I am honoring them by participating with them, not because I'm Muslim, but because I know that it takes something special to remove sustenance from your body for any extended time, and I need to make sure that I honor them by understanding it and learning patience and grace. So by doing that, I need to be in community with them. And they know that. That's what I do. I am who I am, unapologetically, and I can't understand why we allow certain comments to go unchecked. It doesn't matter how hurtful it is. We have people who co-op what they mean. They said what they said. On the eve of Ramadan, I will never, ever, ever want to hear anybody else from this dais refer to a group of people as a colony of anything. I don't know how we allow this. I don't know why we allow this, but we have students coming up here talking about respect and disrespect and that kind of stuff, and we're doing it on our own as adults, and we know better. We know better. I'm tired. I'm tired of defending behavior that we know we should not navigate in spaces intentionally or unintentionally. I know who you are, and now I believe who you are because you've shown me. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, that takes us to Section 4, which is the Superintendent's Report. Superintendent Bell?
Thank you, President Clark. This evening, I begin my report by thanking Kent Laboratory Academy Office Manager Jose Esqueda Hidalgo. Last week, Mr. Esqueda Hidalgo was supervising lunch when he noticed a high school student choking. He confirmed the student was having difficulty breathing, and then used his first aid skills to administer and administrate an abdominal thrust to dislodge the food that was obstructing him to breathe, and the student was able to breathe again. Our sincere appreciation to Mr. Esqueda Hidalgo for being willing and ready to help save a life of one of our students in the Kent School District. And speaking of saving a life, congratulations to Erav Pilay, a sixth grade student from Kent Laboratory Academy, for winning the Washington State Poison Prevention Poster Contest. Over 70 students submitted posters for consideration, with Erav chosen to be part of the Poison Prevention Campaign and Safety Curriculum for elementary students.
That's awesome.
Please see Erav's poster on the screen. I'm going to pause. Oh, look at that. But I did pause.
Yes.
Beautiful.
Beautiful, yeah.
We are proud of Erav for sharing his creativity. Well done. I want to recognize Daniel Elementary Principal Jennifer Hogan for improving student group scores on the Washington State Improvement Framework for Schools. This framework identifies how schools can improve the education of all students. Executive Director of Learning Improvement, Ms. Patty Drobny, commented, "Daniel Elementary is a diverse school with high multilingual and free and reduced lunch populations. Principal Hogan's attention to quality instruction, quality feedback to staff, equitable practices, and shared accountability have been major contributors to these scores. Our number one goal is to prepare all students for their futures, and we thank Principal Hogan for her leadership. Well done." A shout-out to Kent Lake High School for being named the Winter Season North Puget Sound League Sportsmanship Champions across all sports. Thank you to our Kent Lake coaches and staff for leading these efforts. Congratulations to our students for being shining examples of sportsmanship and embodying all values of equity, excellence, and community. Spring is a time of new growth, rebirth, and inspiration. As an educator, I know spring signifies a number of things, including assessments and end-of-year evaluations. Spring is also my favorite time of year because baseball season begins. As a former baseball player, coach, and current fan, I know baseball is viewed through the lens of numbers and data. All points of data are used to evaluate players. This should be true of our students as well. Many data points should be used to see a complete picture, a balanced picture of student performance. To that end, we are currently working on refreshing our strategic plan and continuing to incorporate data, accountability, continuous improvement, and coherence with a focus on student voice. When students are involved in decision-making about their own learning, it can be a powerful motivation. I encourage our students and community to get involved in the strategic plan process by attending the next meeting on Tuesday, March 28th, from 6:00 to 7:30 p.m. at Cedar Heights Middle School. I was privileged to attend the State of the City address by Kent Mayor Dana Ralph, along with Board Vice President Farah. We heard about developments in housing and infrastructure, along with current and future business growth. We will be holding a joint meeting with the Kent City Council on April 4th at this Kent City Hall, beginning at 5:00 p.m., to continue forging a strong partnership to support our families, our students, and all of our Kent community. We also held a meeting earlier this week with the Covington City Council. One of the things we learned more about was the Covington Student Art Show. This year marks the first art show since 2020. It is produced by the Covington Youth Council with over 600 students from six KST schools participating. Their artwork is on display at six Covington businesses until March 31st, so get out there and check that art out. I will return to my mantra this year, which is building bridges, every student, every voice, every day, and part of building bridges is partnering with our local city governments as we strive to provide supports for every single one of our students. Another important partnership is with our Kent Schools Foundation. Through partnerships with the King County and the Boeing Company, the Kent Schools Foundation was granted $50,000 to fund social emotional learning supports for students and staff that promote recovery from, or response to, the impacts of COVID-19 pandemic. On March 14th, the Foundation presented nearly $30,000 in grants to Daniel Pine Tree, Martin Sartone, Panther Lake, Ark Orchard, and Springbrook Elementary Schools. Thank you to the Kent Schools Foundations, King County, and the Boeing Company for continuing to support our schools. As I end my report for this evening, I would be remiss if I did not mention the next bond community conversation at Mill Creek Middle School on March 23rd, that is tomorrow. And on March 23rd, from 6:00 to 7:30 p.m., this bond will fund key projects to modernize schools for students while decreasing the projected local school tax rate by 8%. Plan to attend a meeting to ask your questions so that you can make an informed vote. Also, look for your ballot in the mail after April 5th, and be sure to return it by April 25th. I'm encouraged by our continued progress on collaboration and partnerships, both internally as a school board and externally with our local cities and businesses. We are in this together, and together we can make Kent School District a place where everyone feels welcome, and they have a place that they feel they belong. Thank you, and this concludes my report.
Thank you very much. If there are any other comment cards that want to be submitted, they need to go in that box on the back right at this time. So at this point, we're going to go ahead and ask Director Hamada to give us a legislative update.
Well, before I begin, I'm going to do a point of privilege, President Clark, and I just want to say, thank you, kids, for showing up. I'm always encouraged when I see a bunch of young people in the room. You are our customers. This entire board wants to hear more from our customers, so encourage your friends and family and all the other different schools to show up because you are our future, and we want to hear from you, and it just makes me smile when I see you guys in the front. So thank you for taking some time out of your evening tonight. It's a busy time in the legislature right now, and I sent out on my Facebook page, my actually page for the school updates on my director's account, is I sent an update out on 3/20, or 3/19, because there was a lot of stuff coming out on the 20th that we should be aware of, and I'm going to try to update some of that, too. The March revenue forecast was released on Monday, the 19th, and it indeed was. On 3/21 Tuesday, the Senate capital proposal is set to be released. It was. On 3/24, which is coming up, the Senate operating budget will be released, and the House budget is expected to come this week after next. Signing die, which means the end of the session, which is April 23rd, is approaching, so you can see all these bills are scrambling. They're going from committee to committee to hearing to hearing, and now most of them are kind of edging their way toward appropriations or ways and means. Appropriation is pretty much on the House side, and wins and means is on the Senate side. Some of the bills that we've been following, that I kind of want to go into, we've really been following, special education funding on, they've now put some engrossed ingredients into that, so they call it E2SSB 5311. So that means they've added to the Senate Bill 5311, and that was, they had more testimony in the House on the Senate bill on 3/20 at 1:30, and I testified via written testimony, which you can do, or by Zoom, and I testified pro for the Kent School District. Senate Bill 5311 has not changed since it was heard last week in the House Education and has passed out a committee. On Thursday, we will be able to see a draft of the Senate Operating Budget, which is said to be the determining of the high reflection for the education budget. The House version will be released the following week. These budgets that they're developing will be a roadmap for what we might expect in the final budget of the special education, so we're going to be watching this closely. It is widely-held opinion that we will see the multiplier, which is part of the bill, between the House bill, which the House bill on the special education was House Bill 1436. Oftentimes, each side, the House and the Senate, have separate bills about the same similar subject, and Senate Bill 53 version are going to probably remain in the in-between on the multiplier between those two bills, and they're probably going to come to the 15. 15% cap. And we'll be able to determine that more after the Senate bill comes out, and they will have some final notes on that, so we're going to be watching that. But I think the good news is, even though these bills have been watered down, which means they've cut more funding of the multipliers or whatever, we are going to get, it looks like we're going to get that, those bills have been moving to the House and the Senate and appropriations and the ways and means, which is just kind of like a whole thing until they get down to, they pass all this and they pass it on the floor, and they have a fiscal note with it that passes, but it looks like we're going to have some more special education funding, so that no matter how much it is, we are going to say thank you because we need it and we appreciate it. And I want you to know that I was down there on the 14th of March and testified in person, even though I got 150 words, which is hard for me to stop at. The other school meals was another bill we're watching, and that again has some letters and numbers in front of it that they've changed, House Bill 20, or 1238, so it's now E2SHB 1238 is scheduled for executive session in the Senate Early Learning and K-12 Education on Monday. I also sent written testimony on that, testifying for the school district on parole. It was referred to Ways and Means, so that means that bill is also moving around and going forward. The fiscal note, last time the bill was fully not funded. We got used to in COVID having universal healthcare, which kind of the feds kicked into the state to say all the meals were covered, and that's kind of gone away. And we had hoped this year to get that true in the state, that all the meals would be again covered, and they're kind of weighing back on that. So they have come up with a formula where it's kind of complex, how much you're on, free and reduced lunch, how much your income is, but they have increased that you can make a little bit more money, so that's going to increase a little bit, probably about 80%, so we're edging our way to 100% coverage for all our kids, and we all know how important it is for all our kids to have nutrition. The other bill we've been watching is EBSSB 5174. It's scheduled for executive session in the House Appropriations on 3/22 at 4:00 p.m. I also submitted written testimony on that pro. Transition to Kindergarten 2SHB 1550 is scheduled for in the Senate Early Learning and K-12 Education on Wednesday. I also sent testimony on that. I just put "other" on that. And that is about assisting eligible children in the need of additional preparation to be successful in kindergarten by establishing the transition to kindergarten program. We have Head Start and E-CAP and all that. This is kind of in-between where if you're kind of a middle-income and you don't qualify for those programs, that you see your child's going to need a little extra help in kindergarten, they're trying to do a little bit more with that. Overall, on WASDA is down there, Washington State School Directors and their staff is down there fighting for us every day. They're making some small progress. We also, as a school board, want to be starting before their session to be thinking about if we want next year to bring any kind of thing to WASDA, that we can build a bill, something we feel passionately about, but that's going to come up pretty soon, so we need to be thinking about that and talking about that. So if our school district wants to bring that forward, the board can bring that forward. And that concludes my report. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Director Hamada. We're now into Section 6, which is Presentation, and I'm going to turn the show over to Superintendent Vella.
Thank you. President Clark, I'd like to invite Mr. Spencer Pan, our interim Associate Superintendent of Teaching and Learning, who will begin the presentation and introduce our guests.
Thank you. Thank you, members of the board, Superintendent Vella, and Ms. Zantello. I'd like to introduce our Assistant Director of Teaching and Learning.
Thank you again for this opportunity. It seems like just recently I was here talking about music, and I'm here to talk about music again. It's my favorite topic. We have a beautiful display over here that says "Music for Life." What a great statement. Louis Armstrong, that great American philosopher, let us say, said that what we play is life, and that's how music fits. Research shows us that music in schools is one of the main reasons that kids will stay. The use of music for programs with, for at-risk students is valued across the country and shown to be very successful. I note that we had proclamations about autism and proclamations about occupational therapy, and music therapy and the role of music in both of those areas is immense, and we see the benefits for those. One of the things that I have the great honor of looking at with this Music for Life is here in Kent, we have a chapter of Music for Life that helps bring instruments and helps support our programs in our schools, especially our elementary programs. Dave Endicott, who founded Music for Life, will talk, waxes on and on and on about his own experience, how music saved him, kept him from going down that wrong road, or actually brought him back. So we are very lucky here in Kent to have an organization that is founded, they started just before I got here, and I've just had some wonderful people to work with there. They've been absolutely supportive, and they've worked tirelessly and diligently to help bring instruments into our program. They bring these in at no cost to us. People donate used instruments, Music for Life takes them, fixes them up, and gives us, gives us to them ready to hand out to students. So this has just been a phenomenal gift for us, and dozens upon dozens of instruments that we've received. So I just can't, I can't say enough about the support and the efforts of our Kent Music for Life chapter, along with Spencer Pan's support of our music programs, and Dr. Corbly for her tireless and endless support of our program and working on behalf of them. But it is my great honor at this time to support and bring forth Allison Johnson of
Hi, I'm Linda McIntosh, and I have Allison Johnson with me, and he just gave my speech. So I'm going to be really quick now and just say that Music for Life has been here for about six years. It started at a school in Edmonds, and that's where there are now 11 school districts that are doing it, and we've been doing it here for about six years. So, Chris, he stole my comments. So I wanted to tell you that there are several parts of this program, and one of them is, of course, getting the students involved. And we have had wonderful support from the school district, and Chris Corbly and Chris White, doctors, both of them have been hard-working parts of this program. Let me thank you. The other parts of the program are the, we call the Kent Booster Club, and we have several programs that we work on, and the first one is instruments. We take used instruments, we repair them, we clean them, and we give them this to you when they are play-ready, and that's important to us that they are play-ready and you don't have to worry about fixing them up. You can just hand them to a student. The average life of an instrument is about 15 years, so you can tell that that instrument will be used by several students in its lifetime. We also have a need in our organization for more people in our booster club. We continue to grow as the instruments' need increases, and so if you have volunteer time, that's my joke, that you could give, or if you know people who love music, who love education, who love students, who would like to volunteer their time, please let us know, and we will contact them. And last of all, you should know that we, our third thing to do as the Booster Club is to find donations. We have to pay for all of those repairs. It's the only thing we do with money is that kind of repair, but we will be asking the community for that as well. So I thank you very much for your time, and Allison has a few things to say.
We do have in Kent some places where we, people can donate instruments. One that's really easy is you can just bring it to the administration building, and then just Dr. White can take care of them. Another one is at Kent Station, the Cow Chip is also a donation place, and the Kent Chamber of Commerce, and also Caldwell Banking, Linda's office, where she works, can also take instruments. So we have several locations that community can drop off instruments. We are also putting, asking for donations periodically on Facebook, on our Facebook page, my Facebook page, and other members of the Booster Club does share, so another way that we can get instruments. We have probably had over 100 instruments donated in the last few years, but we do need more. We have seen a need, big time this year, and unfortunately, we just can't provide it all. So if anybody has any instruments and would like to donate, please let us know. And that's all I have to say, but thank you. I want to thank the school board for all you guys do. I'm kind of a volunteer, and I know you guys do a lot of work, so I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. 602 is Kids at Hope. Superintendent Vella?
Thank you. President Clark, I'd like to invite, who is on Zoom with us, Mr. Randy Heath, our Associate Superintendent of Schools and Academic Support, who will introduce our guests for Kids at Hope. Mr. Heath?
Great. Thank you, President Clark, members of the board, Superintendent Vella, Ms. Zantello. Once again, we've made a commitment this year to our school board to highlight the wonderful things that are going on in our schools, and luckily, we have so many wonderful things to pick from that we have no trouble doing that each month. So I want to hand it over right now to, I believe it's Dr. Avery, who's in the room, who's going to come up and introduce two of our elementary principals to share a program that they both do at their.
It is Patty Drobny, who is filling in for.
I wish I was Dr. Avery. It is one of her schools. Good evening, President Clark, members of the board, Superintendent Vella, Ms. Zantello. One of the best things about being in Edley is getting to see the amazing things that our principals and their staffs do with kids every day. We see evidence of learning, quality instruction, adults who truly enjoy working with kids. When we're lucky, we see kids who believe in themselves and are able to show perseverance, pride, and even joy in their learning. Tonight, it's my privilege to welcome Ms. Trish Stalard, Principal at Cedar Valley Elementary, and Ms. Allison LaRosa Flick, an administrative intern at Cedar Valley, who will be presenting an overview of Kids at Hope, a program in their school. I don't want to steal their thunder, but spoiler alert, you're going to see how powerful hope can be in setting students up for success academically and socially. I think you'll enjoy what you have to hear. I present Ms. Stalard and Ms. LaRosa Flick.
Good evening, President Clark, board members, Superintendent Vella, and Ms. Zantello. I am Trish Stalard, and I am the proud, proud principal at Cedar Valley. I'm wrapping up, I can't believe it's almost over, the fourth year at Cedar Valley, and I'm here with Allison LaRosa Flick, who is the intern at Pine Tree, actually, and she is here, Dr. Steiner couldn't make it tonight, so I'm going to bring all the Steiner energy that I possibly can this evening to this presentation. And it's a lot, right? But we're kind of sisters from another mister. We have a long history together, so I'm going to try to bring it. Do I do my own slides, or do you do them? Okay, I'm going to go ahead and forward. So first, I just wanted to talk to you about Kids at Hope. What does at hope mean? Well, even this evening in this building, we have heard the term "at risk" used, and it's the most common term to be used when we're referring to people who have some element of risk in their life. But the thing is, if we just think of people as at risk, we give ourselves an excuse not to help them to the best of our ability. We just have excused ourselves, saying that is a person at risk, and they will have a hard life. But if we think of them as at hope, if we actually embrace that philosophy and mindset, we can have a greater impact on people by recognizing their strengths, by teaching them to picture their own future, by teaching them the importance of forming and maintaining relationships with others, and how that develops hope in their lives. Rick Miller, the founder of the Kids at Hope organization, said, "Hope possesses both the capacity and ability to mentally time travel by positively imagining one's future within life's four major destinations: home and family, education and career, community and service, and hobbies and recreation. Return to the present and prepare for the journey." So it's not just about dreaming, like, what do you want to be when you grow up? What's your job? But who do you want to be? What kind of person are you going to be when you're older? And then let's come back and create the pathway to that. So the Kids at Hope philosophy or cultural framework is based on three universal truths. Universal truth is, number one, is that children and adults are more likely to be hopeful and successful when they're surrounded by people who believe in them. And we show this in a number of different ways. At my school, oops, I should have gone back, at Cedar Valley and at Pine Tree and at a couple other Kent schools, the scholars say a little pledge every single morning. They say a positive affirmation. Can I say it for you? Okay. It says, "I am a kid at hope. I am talented, smart, and capable of success. I have dreams for the future, and I will climb to reach those goals and dreams every day. All kids are capable of success, no exceptions." And they say that every single morning and every time we assemble. The other thing that we do is we assert our belief to them, so we say what's called the treasure hunter pledge. Remember, if we are searching for hope, we have to search. Sometimes we got to dig. Sometimes it's deep. So we refer to ourselves as treasure hunters. As an adult and treasure hunter, I am committed to search for all the talents, skills, and intelligences that exist in all children and youth, and I believe all kids are capable of success, no exceptions. They hear that every day from every staff member. Universal truth number two is that children and adults are more likely to be hopeful and successful when they have meaningful and sustainable relationships with caring adults. But what the Kids at Hope cultural framework does is we separate those relationships into different kinds of categories, because different adults can bring different things to the table for the kids. So you've got your anchor parent at home. We describe that as that's the one who cleans up after you when you're sick at 2:00 in the morning. There's only like one person in the world who's going to be that person for you, or maybe a couple in your home. Hopefully, you have that, but if you don't, we can help build a winning hand for you by handing you other aces in the community and in our school. So the ace of spades is that adult relationship, someone who has high expectations believes in you more than you believe in yourself. And you might even be thinking right now, well, as an adult, I have these aces in my life, too, because we all do. Children and adults are more successful if we have these things. The other caring adult is the ace of clubs, and that is just someone, like, they know the kid's dog's name, and they just know sort of some personal things about them and can connect with them on a personal level, and it's someone who a kid would go to for help if they needed it. They know, I can go to that person, and they're going to help me. And then your ace of diamonds is opportunities for success. That's relationships with people who provide opportunities for you to be successful in different ways. Maybe it's your football coach, maybe it's your voice teacher, maybe it's you feel really skilled at math, so it's your math teacher, even though ELA is really hard for you. So it's those opportunities for success. And the final universal truth is mental time travel, and this is where we think about those four destinations. The Kids at Hope research with Arizona State University back in the 90s, which they have continued to research since then, but at that point, it was discovered that when you picture the future in these four different destinations, actually, different neural pathways open and different parts of the brain line up, light up on an MRI. So this is why these are the four categories that we time travel to. Children and adults are more likely to be hopeful and successful when they can imagine and articulate their future in multiple dimensions, domains, or destinations. And again, those are home and family. Like, what does your future home look like? Are you going to live in the beach? Do you want an apartment? Will you have dogs? Do you think you'll be a parent? Career and education, what are you going to do for money? You're going to have to make some money. And what kind of education do you think you might want to get there? But education doesn't have to only be a pathway to a job. It can just be, I like to learn things, too. Hobbies and recreation, what do you do for fun when you're older that you can't do now? So I might not have access to snowboarding as a nine-year-old living in the Kent Valley, but that's something I'm really thinking about, and I'm going to work my way to that as an adult. And then community service, how do you give back to your community? You're up? Okay. Oh, yeah, this is, oh, I forgot, because I took Dana's slides. Okay. So at Cedar Valley, I want to invite all of you, first of all, because we will have our second annual Tunnel of Hope, and many of you were there last year. Thank you for coming. We do Destination Month in March. We do Destination Month in March at Cedar Valley. So we time travel to each one of these destinations that I just listed for you, one a week in March. And the last week of March is our big spirit week. And one day, our scholars will wear the Cedar Valley school colors. And another day, they'll wear Cedar Heights and then Kent Lake. And finally, at the end of the week, on March 31st, 10:30 a.m., come early, because we don't have a lot of parking. That's another topic for a different. But what happens is, if you look at this picture here, you see the scholars, they dressed up, and I call them scholars, but our scholars dressed up for their futures. And it was so cool seeing them come in. And just speaking about, someone mentioned earlier, mental health, that one whole class of fifth graders, no one remembered to dress up. And that was fine. The teacher provided them with little signs to wear around their neck. And half of the class said that they wanted to be a mental health therapist for kids. Like, yes, the impact of COVID has really hit home on these kids, and they know what they need, and they know what kids in the future are going to need, too. So the Tunnel of Hope is this great thing where, you know, if you imagine you're at a football game or something like that, and people are lining up both sides, and the players run through, and everyone's cheering for them, that's what we do for our scholars and our staff. And it's really cool, and I hope you can come.
Yes.
So these are some of our pictures from Destination Day, some of our scholars that dressed up, and they want to be nurses and doctors and cheerleaders. And, let's see, and then we've got a math teacher. And some of our teachers dressed up for their future destination, which is retirement on a beach. So that was a lot of fun. And then Ms. LaRosa Flick is going to share with you a little bit about Pine Tree.
I love it.
Good evening, President Clark, members of the board, Superintendent Bella, and Ms. Santello. I'm Allison Flick, and I'm the admin intern at Pine Tree. I've been doing a lot of work this year with Kids at Hope, and I want to show you some of the cool things we've been working on. In the fall, we hosted an Aces Lunch. So in the beginning of the presentation, we talked about the four different adults and kids' lives. Our kids had the opportunity to invite an important adult to have lunch with them. For some, that was family. For some, it was friends. For some, it was teachers. So it was really cool to see who they decided to invite and celebrate and recognize those people in their lives. Just a few more pictures to enjoy. We also hosted a career fair. We had community members, family members. People joined us on Zoom to talk to our students about different career paths and what it took to get there. What does that mean for you? Does it mean you go to college? Do you get a technical certificate? Do you jump right into owning your own business? The paths that they took to reach their goals, also. We had so many kids interacting, it was a magical experience.
Yeah. Okay, so another thing that's really important, we know how important it is to appreciate our staff. And so Pine Tree has latched onto this idea this year. It was something that we started at Cedar Valley last year called 10 Day, or 10's Day. And where we get the 10 from is that in the Kids at Hope cultural framework, you rate yourself as an adult on a scale of 1 to 10. I believe all kids are capable of success, no exceptions. Now, you have to be a 10. If you're not a 10, then you're making those exceptions. But staff realizes that over time. Oftentimes, when we give that survey and we ask them to rate themselves, at first, they're a 6, a 7, you know, somewhere around that. Then when you start really ingraining into this philosophy and really hunting for those treasures and working together to form those relationships, suddenly, everyone starts rating themselves a 10. They start to just buy in and truly believe that every single kid can be successful. So we celebrate them. And at Cedar Valley, the way we do that is we take nominations from the community and from our scholars and from colleagues. And they nominate one another. And I hand out all of the nomination forms each month, so everyone gets to see the nice things that were written about them. And then I choose two staff, one classified, one certificated, each month. They get a little gift card from me, a little pin that says 10, just like that sign that says "no exceptions." And it's a really cool celebration of our staff and just, you know, a thank you for believing in our kids. We believe that Kids at Hope is aligned directly with what we do here in Kent School District. It brings equity. We encourage excellence in our staff and our scholars, and we build community through this framework. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right, and we have 603, Strategic Plan Update.
Thank you, President Clark. I'd like to invite Dr. Wade Behringer, our Associate Superintendent of Strategic Initiatives and Operations, to begin our presentation.
Good evening, President Clark, members of the board, Superintendent Bella, Ms. Santello. Appreciate the opportunity to be in front of you for, like, 20 seconds this evening to introduce an amazing team member in our DARTS team. I would like to have Joel Bararano join us up here as the Director of Strategic Initiatives to share with you our progress of our strategic planning updates that we've been working on for the last few months. Joel?
Thank you, and good evening, President Clark, members of the board, Superintendent Bella, Ms. Santello, Ms. Curry, and Ms. Holly. Really excited and privileged, honored, really, to share this information with you this evening about the important update work that we've been doing for our strategic plan. As you all know, the strategic plan is a really important resource within our system and really sets our district on a trajectory for growth and improvement and really helps to reinforce and instill the coherence by design. So with that, I'm excited to share with you the approach that we've been taking to this update work, the progress we've made so far, discuss the input, feedback, and ideas that we've received. And this slide, is this the presentation? Okay. Well, the abridged agenda here that you see. We'll talk about the progress and upcoming opportunities for continued input. So all of our work is guided by these specific outcomes here. So as I mentioned, we've been engaged in an update. So we recognize that for school districts, generally speaking, we want to strive for high student achievement, and we want to engage our stakeholders intentionally and authentically. We need to have systems that are equitable and efficient and effective. And we need staff that reflect our students served and our community that are prepared with the resources they need to support our students in all the ways that they desire. So with that, our goal areas have stayed consistent. There have been some refinements to those, but really, the heart of our work in this process is to fill those buckets, to fill our goal areas with the commitments and strategies and indicators that are going to be important for our system moving forward. With that, we need to be intentional about identifying the data that we're going to use to progress monitor and understand the impact of the work that we do. So you see there, the monitoring of progress and monitoring of the impact of those strategies throughout the process. We also need to really prioritize the input, feedback, and ideas of our students, teachers, and families in this process. We want to create a plan that really reflects their ideas in full. We need to share ownership in this plan and these ideas moving forward. And centering that voice, especially of our students, is going to be key in that process. And last, but certainly not least, we need to create accessible and relevant materials. That might not look like one document for everybody. That might look like resources, like brochures or infographics, perhaps resources created by our students to really share the ideas that are contained within that plan. There are a few key structures that are necessary in this process. We have a steering team that has really been instrumental in helping to synthesize the information and recommendations that we've been collecting so far and is inclusive of facilitators who are leading our goal-aligned committees. Our committees are newly formed and include all of our board members as well, and will really be a key component moving forward to really hear the input, feedback, and ideas that we're gathering through all of our stakeholder opportunities, helping to make meaning of those and provide recommendations as we iterate towards a final draft of our plan. Outside of our committees, we know that there are impacted stakeholders all across the system, inside and out of it. And so we need to also be intentional about hearing their input, feedback, and ideas and incorporating that into the plan. And we have our KSD community. So through opportunities like our community conversations and soon-to-be additional thought exchange opportunities, surveys, focus groups, listening sessions, everything in between, hearing those ideas and incorporating that through the work in the committees into our final draft. As you can see, these structures really create an intentional feedback loop. We want to create a process that enables us to hear those ideas, iterate on those, and then share back out with our community. Here's what we heard. Here's what we changed. What do you think? And really iterate through a process in that way. Our timeline is what you see here. Our work in this effort really started to deeply energize in December. We started with a series of pre-assessments, and I'm going to use a house analogy. Through this work, we have identified the foundation that we need. We have a sense of the materials that we're going to need to build this house. So we've started to order some of those materials. And now we have, through our goal committees and our community conversations, we have our subject matter experts. We have our architects and our interior designers and everyone in between that's going to be necessary to really build the house that we'll live in together. Our school visits are coming up here in the next couple months, over the next couple months, and will really provide further, deeper opportunity for students and staff in schools to share their thoughts. Again, really, we want to create a plan that everybody can see themselves in and can really share ownership in, because it'll take all of us to engage in that work, to really change our system for the better. And so having that shared ownership is very necessary. We're working towards a adoption of our final updated strategic plan in June. So we have that coming up on the June 28th Board Meeting Day. We know that this work is iterative. As I mentioned, there is a feedback loop in this. And so as we hear those continued ideas, our committees will be interpreting that information and providing further recommendations as we finalize our plan together. So let's talk about some of the progress that we've made so far. Now that we've talked about some of the structures, some of the key activities that are going to be, have been, and are going to continue to be a part of this process, some of the progress made in each of these areas. So our pre-assessments really helped to inform what committee structures we're going to need, the concepts that are going to be aligned to each of those goal areas that now our teams will start to further unpack. It also helped to inform our stakeholder engagement strategies, which through our recent thought exchange, or our thought exchanges started this process, provided some great insight into how we can inform and engage all of our stakeholders as we move forward. We had some ideas to start with, but through that opportunity, we expanded those efforts. Our strategic plan components are what you see here, which is really the basis for that input and feedback that we are collecting. We have our goal areas, of course. But in particular, some of the changes that had arisen through these pre-assessments and further through our community conversations so far is this idea of belief statements. So having statements be a part of our plan that really ground our system in the perspective that will carry into the commitments. The commitments or objectives, as you might have heard some terminology there in the past before, our commitments are those focused statements that describe the intended outcome or the desired state for our system come the end of our plan. As I mentioned, our thought exchange helped to expand our stakeholder engagement strategy. A couple of the recommendations that had come out of that opportunity was to engage our associate superintendents in attending our community conversations and school visits to hear the ideas of our students and families directly. Releasing a on-demand continuous opportunity for students to provide input directly into committees. And so that'll be an exciting component to include in that work moving forward, because, like I said, that'll provide students the opportunity to share their ideas directly with each of our goal committee teams. And then, of course, our school visits. I'm personally very excited for those. Championed by our committees, really centering student voice and teacher voice and staff voice in our schools is key. And so needing to spend time in our schools, hearing those ideas. And so excited to partner with our committees to really bring those opportunities to life. Speaking of committees, you see our purpose statement here for our committees and the overall composition of the teams that we have. We've launched one committee for each of our goals, so a total of four. And we have across those over 45 members, representative of all the roles that you see here. So as we really work to establish that strong feedback loop for iteration, our committees are really tasked with making meaning of that input and feedback that's collected and incorporating those, making recommendations into that final plan content. Community conversations is a primary component to our stakeholder engagement strategy, one of many tools in the toolbox, but an exciting one. We have nine community events that are scheduled. We've held two of those so far. Seven to come with our next one this coming Tuesday, the 28th, at Cedar Heights. We've been very intentional about creating these opportunities for community conversations in a way that removes barriers to our participants. We recognize that especially at the time of day that we're hosting these, that many of our families, you know, may be choosing between having a meal together or attending this. Or in order to attend, they might need childcare. And so we've been intentional about incorporating those supports into our events for this. We've also made interpreters available upon request. And we also have been utilizing, with some great success, our technology resources to help supplement any languages where unable to find an individual person to help with the interpretation for. The work in our community conversations is guided by these two questions. We are really looking to gauge, from our community perspective, if there are any phrases or terms or concepts that might not be clear in our plan draft currently. And then, of course, what additional ideas, feedback, input do you have on what you see here? Again, really with that intent of wanting to have everyone engaged in this process, but also so they can see themselves in the plan that we create. Student engagement, like I said, I'm very excited about this part. Our school visits are going to be a really great opportunity, and we've been talking within our planning team now about how we can structure those to really engage the most schools and most, you know, students, staff, everyone is possible. And so, you know, with this, we're excited to offer focus groups and interviews, asynchronous activities for feedback collection. It'll really run the gamut, and that's exciting. We were talking today even about resources that we can share with our schools to post up around hallways, in common spaces, cafeterias. So lots of great ideas coming out of our team, and will really be in the center of our work here in April. So in conclusion, we invite everyone, everyone in our community to be engaged and involved in this process. So we have a variety of ways now and more coming, because we're always iterating in this process, and new ideas are coming about all the time. We have a mailing list that's available on our website. Through our mailing list, we're sharing access to draft content, announcements for upcoming new opportunities to get involved, and continuous updates about meeting notes with our committees, so on and so forth. So our mailing list is a great way to stay up to date directly to your email inbox. We have seven additional upcoming community conversations. The dates and locations are listed there. We've recently updated our communication plan to include text messages out to families for the strand schools where these meetings will be hosted, as well as additional communication out to our buildings to be partners with us in promoting attendance for staff and students. We're continuing to update our frequently asked questions, and we'll soon be posting drafts of our plan on the website alongside a thought exchange for wide-open input and feedback. So you'll see those launching tentatively next week. And as I mentioned, we have that continuous opportunity for our students through Flipgrid. We're working on a communication plan to market that, but that'll be, of course, included and promoted during our school visits. So with that, thank you for your time this evening to share about this important work and look forward to continuing to engage this team and our community in all of these opportunities moving forward. The strategic plan is setting us on a really positive path moving forward, and I'm personally really excited to see where this will take us and the opportunities we have to create that future together.
Any questions? Okay.
On the agenda, I saw food available, and I thought you literally meant there was going to be food available, but, thank you.
I do appreciate a meeting that has food.
That's good.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Resolution 1639, have a presentation.
Thank you, President Clark. I'd like to again invite Dr. Wade Behringer, our Associate Superintendent of Strategic Initiatives and Operations, back to present.
Good evening, President Clark, members of the board, Superintendent Bella, Ms. Santello. Appreciate the opportunity this evening to be here for a brief presentation regarding the 2016 bond reallocation. So before I get into the presentation, I just want to recognize that there may be some questions out there. You might have heard some things throughout the community, and I hope that this presentation will answer a large majority of those questions for everyone that has them. Please know that the reallocation of these funded projects, probably just use the arrow, it makes it easier. These funded projects here that you'll see in a moment, and you've seen having the narrative in front of you. These funded projects here that you'll see in a moment and you've seen, um, having the, the narrative in front of you as well. Will not stop, uh, from being completed on their regular timelines. So just know that the two thousand sixteen bond, um, reallocation would allow us to be able to access funds to be able to purchase property. Uh, without sacrificing the projects on this list being completed on their current timeline. So in keeping with the board's goal, um, around creating effective organizational systems and the superintendent's goal to provide equitable, safe, healthy and high-quality learning environments, the KSD capital planning team has determined a time-sensitive need for strategic property purchases in support of essential student programs, which we'll talk about here in a moment, within our district. As the board is aware, the outreach program, otherwise known as TOP, Kent Virtual Academy and iGrad. Each have an immediate need for a different or additional space within the district. As you know, Canyon Ridge Middle School, you newly named at our last board meeting, will be opening the fall of twenty twenty-three. Currently, uh, our Kent Virtual Academy is housed in its entirety within the new Canyon Ridge Middle School. As well as five classrooms being used by our outreach program at this time. So obviously those spaces will not be available in the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. And so it's important that, uh, we have an opportunity to, uh, purchase property to potentially allow for a more permanent space for those programs as well as iGrad. Just so you know, and some of you probably do know this, we, iGrad currently lives in a leased storefront, um, uh, space right now. And, and if you didn't know this, the lease is approximately two hundred and forty thousand dollars a year for that space. So I'm in the wrong business, obviously, um, but, uh, we would like to actually have all of our programs housed on KSD-owned property in KSD-owned spaces. That's just fiscally responsible on our part. So, um, each of these programs, um, are critically important to the student's success and require additional or different learning spaces to accommodate that growth. Um, that can happen next year, two years from now, five years from now. And so we just need to be prepared, uh, for that. Uh, the outreach program, as many of you know, many of you has toured the outreach program and talked to, uh, uh, Principal Sharier, I mean, Principal Whitehall. That it's been growing each year to the point that it has five classrooms in the Canyon, um, Ridge Middle School space. So we know that they need additional space. That's not something that, that, uh, just popped up this year. We knew that. The Kent Virtual Academy in its first year, mind you, I mean, it's the brand new inaugural year of the Kent Virtual Academy. As we listen to our community, staff and students and families saying that we'd like to have a remote work option or virtual option for our students. And so, um, we're working through that in our first year and we're seeing enrollment that's going up and down. Um, and right now unfortunately, we're seeing kind of a, a small decrease in enrollment. But we know as we work through the rest of this year and we set ourselves up for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, we're going to see an increase in that enrollment, um, for our students. So regardless though, our Kent Virtual Academy staff and teachers need to have a space. They need to have a physical space, even though, uh, they do teach virtually, um, in their program. So please know this, we do have plans for the trans, for the outreach program and the Kent Virtual Academy. Multiple plans for both of them. But if we have an opportunity to purchase property that is centrally located in Kent, that is on a transportation line. That can have a positive impact on our students in these particular programs. And we have an opportunity to do that, we need to take advantage of that. And I don't want anyone to mistake the fact that we're not always looking for property. We are. Because for those of you and all of you do reside in Kent, property in centrally located areas that are on bus lines are very rare. So when things pop up, we want to take advantage of those opportunities. And they're not always timely and they're not always fitting into our financial plans. And that's why I'm here tonight is because we have an opportunity, but we have a process that we have to go through. So I think it's just, uh, important that we all understand that. So, um, uh, purchasing property, you know, is not quick. So there are several steps we have to take, uh, as a district before we consider officially purchasing property, um, that has not already been allocated by the bond. Two thousand sixteen bond did not have ten million, four million, three million dollars sitting in there for property purchases. Now, that being said, in future bonds after this twenty twenty-three and the twenty thirty bond. We'll probably put some money in there for property purchases, just so we don't have to worry about coming back through the reallocation process. Even though legally we can do that, um, that's not a problem, but just try to be more proactive and, and thinking ahead on that. So that's not a problem there. So we consulted our bond council on the outside. Uh, they said the only way to do this is to go through the reallocation, bond reallocation process. Cause the only funds that we have available to us to use to purchase property is bond money. So that's why we're here today. So, uh, we have to hold a public hearing. That follows directly after I'm done speaking this evening. Uh, then we come back next week for a small special meeting, which then you'll vote on that resolution. So there's no vote tonight. There's no decision tonight. You're just listening to me tonight and we're listening to the public, the open public hearing and any comments that come from that. And then we'll come back next week for a special meeting, uh, which will allow you to vote on that resolution. Um, then we'll have to wait for another meeting to bring you the appraisals and potential offers on properties to let you know. This is what we're going to do moving forward. So there's several pieces to this. It does take a little bit of time, uh, in the end. Um, as if you've ever purchased property or a house before, nothing happens that quick. You've got closing periods of time. You get into negotiations with property owners around what's a, a reasonable, um, uh, 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 offer and things like that. So it will take a little bit of time. Uh, but because there's an opportunity right now, we wanted to make sure that we came to the board and, um, shared this information with you. So. With that said, just quickly let you know, um, that these are the projects. So five point six, roughly five point six million dollars and some change. Um, seven projects from the current two thousand sixteen bond. So these projects would be able to be moved five point six million dollars over so we can access to build or purchase property. These projects would then be funded by our capital levy. Capital levies are different than bonds. Bonds, very specific on what you can use bond funds for. Levis, a lot more latitude and flexibility in what you can use those funds for. So again, I think the important part of this is we have an opportunity, um, to purchase property that will have a positive impact on these programs. In a centrally located transportation line for our students, um, that we'll be able to continue to grow into, um, as we have identified that need. These projects will be completed on their regular timelines, so not impacted at all by this shift in funding. And I think that's important to note. There was a question out there floating around that, uh, uh, that these projects that are listed here on the two thousand sixteen bond are also twenty twenty-three bond projects. That is not accurate. Um, these are twenty sixteen bond projects. Now, if you went to the twenty-three bond website and you saw, uh, field renovation for Meridian, you're right. The twenty sixteen Meridian middle field renovation was for grass fields. We've already had the conversation with the bond, or with the board that we are moving to synthetic fields. So the twenty twenty-three bond project, which may read the same, is for synthetic, not for turf, um, not for grass. And the same can be said for, uh, many of these other projects. There may be similarities. Meadow Ridge Flooring. The flooring on the twenty twenty-three bond is for the MPR, the multi-purpose room. The flooring in the twenty sixteen bond is for the entire building, classrooms, hallways, things like that. So it's really important, um, even though on the website, we don't specifically spell out every little detail of what these are for. I just think it's important, um, to have a more clear picture that they're not, they don't look the same. Uh, they might read the same, but they are not the same. Uh, we wouldn't, we wouldn't do that. It doesn't make sense. Um, but again, that's my presentation. Uh, know this, if we do have the permission of the board, um, to be able to access these funds to purchase property. And those, that property does not, uh, fit into our plan or something, they pull it off the market. Or they're not interested in selling or it's way too expensive. Then the money that we've asked for, if you granted us a permission, it would go back to making sure that we just fund these projects and we just keep moving forward. It's, so the money we're asking for is only to access to purchase the property. If that property goes away and not available, then we're, it's just going to go back into its normal, um, twenty sixteen bond and continue moving forward with those projects. So I just want to be clear on that. Any questions?
I have a question. Uh, cause I had a question about the fields because I was trying to process it. Even when you said it, I still don't understand. So I would love for you to explain it. So the twenty sixteen bond said we're going to do a field renovation for Meridian. What, that we're still going to do, then we're going to, in twenty twenty-three bond, rip it up and then do synthetic?
So.
That feels like a waste of money.
Great question. So the money that's here, the one point seven million dollars for the Meridian, uh, middle school, um, field renovation, that is for a grass field. So we, if the twenty twenty-three bond passes in five weeks, then there's no reason to, to do a grass field at Meridian. What we can do is we can use that money to do the design permitting and scope of that project. That same project for the synthetic field, which costs more like six million dollars and not one point seven. So it would still be used for that purpose, but just a different purpose, not the grass, but the permitting and the scope and the design of the project if the bond passes.
Got it. That makes sense. And so I had another question about the space for TOP and, um, KVA and, um, iGrad. So the, cause I don't necessarily, like, you guys have plans. I don't necessarily know what those plans are. I haven't seen those. And so I know there's been like ideas or plans for what we want to do later, but with this new property that's available, how's that going to change those plans? What is that going to look like?
Yeah. So the property, the purchase of the property again has timelines. So we have to have these plans in place and know that we can go, okay, well, we can put TOP here, we can put TOP here, we can put TOP here. Well, if this property comes available and we can take care of it and do the things that we need to, then we'd rather move the, them into the property that we have, that we can purchase here as a more permanent solution. But if not, we have these other two or three plans. So without saying it here, because I don't want to, even though everyone who's engaged in, in are impacted by those plans knows about it. Um, we're not in that space ready to say that is the plan that's going to happen. I just wanted the board to know that, that we're not just going in willy-nilly. We actually do have plans and it's been thought out. And it's one of those, uh, we could do this or we could do that. It's going to depend on if we have, get access to the property. Can we turn the property over quick enough to be able to get one or more of those programs into those spaces and not have to do those plans?
But the plan isn't just to buy land, throw a bunch of portables on it and put the top program in there?
Nope.
Okay. Cause I was going to speak highly against that.
Definitely not the plan.
Okay.
Definitely not the plan.
What would be the plan for the current, uh, TOP facility? Is there a goal or idea that you have for where the TOP current facility is?
Yeah, that's not something I was prepared to share tonight, even though I have the plan. It's just not for public consumption at this point right now. Um, that's probably something we can, I can share maybe in a weekly update in the coming weeks and let you know a little bit more about that.
Okay.
Yep.
And then I remember once upon a time you saying that, um, KLA was designed to be expanded to add programs to it. Is that, and is that part of the plan that you're not ready to share about tonight either?
Um, it's not part of the immediate plan because to build onto the, cause you're right, KLA was built to have an ax, or an annex added to it. Um, but again, that has, so dollar implications to that. So it's not in a current bond right now to build that. That takes time as well. So it's not something quickly, a quick turnaround that we are looking for. And that would only serve potentially one of the programs and not all of our programs. And so that definitely is in our heads and we know that, but it's not for something that's something to do in the next six to eight months.
So regardless of we buy property, sorry, this is a lot of questions.
You're good.
That we're not going to turn anything over and build anything by this fall? Or?
Not necessarily build, we're not going to build anything, but there, the pieces of property have existing structures that may allow for a quick renovation and then access to those spaces.
Got it. Okay. That's all I have, I promise.
I'd like to add another piece that, that wasn't talked about is enrollment. We also need to be looking at enrollment and I know our school visits that I've had with, uh, a few of our, um, board members. Speaking of TOP, that's where space is needed. And we've talked about iGrad as well in terms of getting iGrad back onto KSD property, um, from a fiscal perspective. Um, so I just wanted to add, enrollment is, is key to this as well.
Very cool. Any other questions?
I have a comment. Um, I just hope our public is listening tonight because there's a lot of questions here that I had and our public had. And I, I appreciate Dr. Berenger spending a lot of time with me because some of this is kind of confusing. You know, if you don't know the particulars and, and going over this and explaining it. And making sure that we are actually taking advantage of a situation that's come up. So it could be fiscally beneficial to this district is something we can't just say, well, we have to have all this in stone forever. And, and we have to go because this is the plan and we can't deviate. I think that shows our district is becoming more flexible and taking advantage of some good opportunities that are coming forward. And still meeting the obligations that we were originally put into by our citizens and meeting that and being very thoughtful to go through with that. And I appreciate all the work on this. And again, one, one thing I think that's noteworthy is our TOPs, our outreach and, and the, uh, KVA. You know, they all cost money, but we're doing a lot of things here that are way beyond what we have to do to serve our community. And I just think, I'm very pleased. I mean, if you ever want to get a really high, go to the TOPS graduation. And you will see what our dollars are doing to kids and the opportunities it's giving them to be a part of society and have jobs when they get out of the program. So thank you very much, Dr. Berenger.
Yeah, I, I just want to add that, um, I, I totally get it because nothing really aligns exactly perfect. So when I hear comments, people saying, oh, you, you were, you didn't plan this or you didn't plan that. It, it brings me to just say, I mean, unless you're somebody who cares about the kid's future, please don't make those comments. So I just wanted to, that lets you know that. Thank you for bringing that up tonight so the community can hear.
Yeah, and I appreciate, um, uh, Vice President Farah, um, not assuming that we didn't have plans.
Right.
You know, we do have plans.
Yeah.
But this opportunity is even maybe a better plan than the plans that we had. And if a better plan, that's more of a permanent fix, then that's where we want to be.
I mean, we should do that all the time.
For sure.
Because when, and when, when, when property presents itself that is convenient on a bus line, close to where we want it. It would be crazy for us to say, well, we don't have that plan, so we're not going to do that. We have to figure out how.
And we have a legal process to do it. And that's why we're here tonight. And again, we're, we're being very transparent, open, honest, straightforward, you know, and that's the right thing to do, absolutely.
Can I just make, uh, and maybe a little aside, the comment of, well, this was on the last bond or is this on the same one? This is, I, I just think it's interesting when, uh, people think of their own homes, right? Flooring can only last so long.
Right.
And so sometimes you have to replace it, even if it's not, because bond usually is at eight years. I hope we don't have to replace flooring every eight years, but sometimes things happen, different things. You, you may have to do them on not maybe back-to-back bonds, but different bonds, you know, over the years. Because when you have enough kids walking through on things, things wear out and, and things need updating and codes change and all of those things. So, uh, while I appreciate that you were talking about, well, this is the flooring in this building compared to this building or this part of the building compared to that. I, I also think it's short-sighted to think that sometimes we have to redo things because things age.
Yeah.
I appreciate that, uh, Director Margel. The other piece, I think it was you and I, maybe forgive me if I, and product changes.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
And when you think about owning a home, we don't plan, you know, twelve years later to put the same product. There may be a product and I, I'm thinking of the Florida pine tree is the one that I can remember.
Yeah.
Where that product now is now a product that we know is going to help support, maybe last a little longer. So it's, it's continuous improvement in every goal area, including goal three. Thank you for bringing that up.
And one of the things I learned just in the last twenty-four, thirty-six hours around this process, seeing some community comments, is that maybe we need seeing some community comments, is that maybe we need to be a little bit more clear on some of our projects.
Fair.
You know, the Lake Youngs roof.
Mm-hmm.
Well, the Lake Youngs roof is still in 2016 bond, but that Lake Youngs roof on the 2016 bond is the main building roof.
Mm-hmm.
The bond on the 20, the Lake Youngs roof on the 2023 bond is the gym and the annex building.
Right.
So, I think we can do a better job and limit some of those questions by creating more space. One of the things that we did when we were going through the bond process and building the website and putting things out there, was how can we say it more succinctly? Well, this has kind of come back to like, hey, you guys are doing the same thing. Well, I guess we should have put main building roof, annex and gym roof, and that way, it wouldn't cause any people to ask questions like that.
Right.
Again, something we talked about as a team today, like, okay, moving forward, we're going to make sure that there, we take that, any kind of question or doubt out of that picture, so people won't question that piece.
Well, kudos to people for looking and noticing, and thank you for putting it out there, so the questions can come up and we can get better.
For sure. Absolutely. It's all we can do. Yep. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Behringer.
So, if the board is listening, I'm going to ask for a motion to open the public hearing.
So shall move.
Seconded.
Okay. So, the purpose of that, obviously, is this is for the public record, and I'll go ahead and ask for the vote.
President Clark, we do have one online comment that I was waiting for the hearing to open, so that we could hear the online comment to speak to this item. So I'll have Ms. Centello come up and do that, and then the board can continue.
Okay, we need to vote to open the...
You open it.
Vote.
Yes. All right, all those in favor of voting to open the meeting, signify by raising your right hand, saying aye.
Aye.
And the motion passes 5-0. You're on.
Good evening, President Clark, members of the board, and Superintendent Vella. There was one online comment submitted, specific for this public hearing, for the 2016 bond fund reallocation. It was submitted by Michelle Bettenger. I oppose the reallocation of 2016 bond funds and think it violates the promises made, promises kept of that bond. It's legal to reallocate bond funds, but find the questionable decisions that have created the necessity to do so objectionable. Without any forward-facing cohesive master plan that encompasses all of Kent School District's departments, this reallocation seems to be a reaction to poor decisions and lack of overall planning. Boundary discussions began in 2020. District leaders have been selling and leasing property for these three years, even though the need to repurpose the old KPA and relocate top and KVA was well-known. Even if property is purchased swiftly, how will classrooms for these programs be ready in less than five months? Top needs five classrooms, yet in January 2022, three of five board directors voted to declare surplus and lease 10 classrooms to the Bezos Academy for the sum of $1 per month for 10 years without public hearing. Apparently, leaving KSD students with no space while Bezos Academy provides free preschool for families making six-figure incomes according to their eligibility chart. KVA is a new school that was also never approved by any vote of the board. Public records show enrollment has dropped 16% from 202 to 169 students in its first five months. There's been no report to the board of the educational or financial efficacy of that school. When Kent Laboratory Academy, KLA, was built, it was made clear to the board that extra tax dollars went to add infrastructure, so construction of another wing of the school could occur at a future date. Why not reallocate bond dollars to construct that wing? Added to this questionable reallocation are the changes to Policy 4220 that removes a citizen's right to file a complaint against the superintendent, and Policy 5271, removing whistleblower protections for staff who report violations of policy that aren't covered under a state or federal law. Leaders who cannot tolerate any objection to their behavior tend to do objectionable things. I consider the reallocation of bond funds when the district has property on KLA site and has given away classrooms as an objectionable thing, particularly when taxpayers are being asked to approve a new bond that is nearly half a billion dollars and doesn't even include constructing any new buildings. The 16 bond was nearly half of the current bond's ask, and three buildings were constructed with that money. $252 million versus a new ask of $495 million. I do not agree with the 2016 taxpayer-approved bonds being reallocated to cover the choices made by leaders who clearly don't tolerate questioning and change policy to protect their own assets. That's the end of this public comment, and no further public comments have been submitted.
All right. With that, and I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Is there any...
Anyone wishing to come to the microphone to speak on this, feel free. All right, that's where we're at then.
Okay.
All right?
I make a motion to close the public hearing.
I second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded by Director Benno to close the public hearing. I'll call for the question. All those in favor of the motion, signify by raising your right hand, saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0. Public hearing is closed. All right. I believe, at this point, we're now into Section 8.
Eight.
Just for the audience, for the sake that you understand what's going on here, with the exception of the last motion, the rest of this is a variety of policies that have been under significant discussion with the board in previous workshops. So don't be surprised if there isn't a real in-depth discussion of what's going on, because all that already has a public record in front of it. All right, with that, the chair would entertain a motion on 801, Policy 1220.
I move that we approve the third reading, I'm sorry, 8.01, the third reading and approval of Policy 1220, Board Officers and Duties of Board Members.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Discussion. Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All those in favor of the motion, signify by raising your right hand, saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and the motion passes 5-0. The chair would now entertain a motion on 802, Policy 3143.
I move that we approve the second reading and approval of Policy 3143, Notification and Dissemination of Information About Student Offenses and Notification of Threats of Violence or Harm.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Discussion. Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All those in favor of the motion, signify by raising your right hand, saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and the motion passes 5-0. Next up is 803, about Policy 3144.
I make a motion to approve 8.03, Retirement of Policy 3144, Release of Information Concerning Student Sexual and Kidnapping Offenders.
Second.
All right, is there any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All those in favor of the motion, signify by raising your right hand, saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and the motion passes. Whoops, did I hear? Was there a name there? Okay, motion passes 5-0. All right, 804, Policy 3225.
I move 804, Second Reading of Policy 3225, School-Based Threat Assessment.
My second.
All right, discussion. Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All those in favor of the motion, signify by raising your right hand, saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and the motion passes 5-0. Next up is 805, Policy 3241.
I move that we approve Second Reading, I'm sorry, 8.05, Second Reading and Approval of Policy 3241, Student Discipline.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All those in favor of the motion, signify by raising your right hand, saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and the motion passes 5-0. All right, next up is 806, and Policy 4220.
Okay. President Clark, I believe we do have, check with Ms. Centello, do we have an online comment on this?
There is one additional comment this evening, and it is for 8.06, yes.
Do we need to approve it and bring it into discussion, then?
So we can hear it.
So then we can hear the con...
A, number one, I suspect we're not going to get a motion to approve 4220.
No.
So if, in fact, we're not going to vote on it, then we don't have to entertain the comment. So...
I was going to make a motion to table this to our next policy meetings.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say.
So, motion to table by Director Benno and second by Director Hamada? And with that, that simply is, we'll table and discuss it in the next policy board meeting.
Do we need to vote on the...
Don't we need to vote on the table?
Yeah, we have to vote on the tabling. All those in favor of the motion, signify by raising your right hand, saying aye.
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 And the motion passes 5-0. All right, that takes us to 807, Policy 4314.
I make a motion for item number 8.07, Retirement of Policy 4314, Notice of Threats of Violence or Harm.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All those in favor of the motion, signify by raising your right hand, saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and the motion passes 5-0. That takes us to 808, Policy 5271.
I'm going to move Policy, or 8.08, Fifth Reading, Approval of Policy 5271, just so we can discuss it.
Second.
All right, we're into discussion.
Oh wait, it's not this one I had a question about, never mind. Sorry.
All right. All right, now, my bad.
In quick summary, as has already been stated, this is the fifth reading. So the discussions on this have been endless.
Yes.
But we apparently have now some agreement. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All those in favor of the motion, signify by raising your right hand, saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and the motion passes 5-0. That takes us to 809, Policy 6220.
Okay, I entertain, well, I, approval of 809, Second Reading of, and Approval of Policy 6220, Bid or Request for Approval Requirements.
Second.
All right, any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All those in favor of the motion, signify by raising your right hand, saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and the motion passes 5-0. Now, we're to 810.
Okay, 810, I move Resolution 1640, Conditional Certification.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Discussion.
I thought I had a question, but I'm good. This was something we talked about last time.
Right.
So I remember that discussion, so I'm good.
You're good.
I'm good.
All right, any other? All right, with that, I'm going to call for the question. All those in favor of the motion, signify by raising your right hand, saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and the motion passes 5-0. Wow, we're into the consent calendar. All right. So, we can deal with all of it, but since we're going to have, we're going to have to poll 902. So, the chair would ask, is there anything else that needs to be polled?
Can I see, can I poll 915, just because I haven't seen it? Because I know we just added it.
Mm-hmm.
I would like to see that, since it's not on my paperwork.
All right, anything else?
How about, how about gift 90...
912.
912.
912.
Yes.
All right, with that, the chair would entertain a motion...
Oh, I'm sorry, I have one more. 905 and 906.
905, 906, now, you piecemeal, but in the meantime, just to expedite, the chair would entertain a motion on the Consent Calendar, Items 901 to 914, minus 902, 905, 906, and 912.
I so moved.
I second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Take care of those items. Whoops, question.
President Clark, if I may, the motion should be 901 to 915?
No, I purposely excluded 915, because we're not going to vote on it. That's already been polled.
It's been polled.
You're excluding 915 from that?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I missed that. Pardon me. Thank you.
No problem. All right, anybody else lost here? Can we go ahead and vote?
You're good.
All right, the items as described on the consent calendar that we have not put a hold on, if you're in favor, signify by raising your right hand, saying aye.
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 And that was, that passes 5-0. Now, we'll take it item by, actually, I'm going to do 905 and 906 first, because that's going to have an impact on other stuff. Go ahead.
Thank you. 905 reopened for discussion?
Yep.
Okay.
Well, no, actually, we have to make a motion, and then we discuss. So the chair would entertain a motion on 905.
I move that we open the...
No, adopt.
Adopt. Sorry. 905, Kent Ridge High School CTE Computer Lab Replacement.
I second. All right, with that, discussion.
I'm going to go ahead and make the discussion. I polled these items specifically, and, well, one, I think we've had some comments about the importance of having good computer lab equipment, and I just want to say that I love seeing that we do have computers that our students take home every day. They are getting better, and we are getting better in our labs, too. And so just wanted to point this out. We've heard, we're fulfilling, and I'm just really excited to see this, so.
All right.
And both Kent Ridge and Kentwood. So I'm going to comment for both of those.
Can I ask a question about that?
Of course.
All right, and I just have a question about the timeline, and I'm sure Lori Paxton has an answer for me.
I will invite Ms. Paxton to come up and address your question.
Yep.
Yes. Oh my, yeah, my question is just, what is the timeline of both? I mean, I'm going to ask for both, but for the CTE computer lab replacement at both those schools.
Right. President Clark, members of the board, Superintendent Vella, thank you for this opportunity. It's, well, as soon as it's approved, we will get it ordered. And so it will be, if we're able to get, receive it, as soon as possible, we'll make the switch. Most likely, it'll be over the summer to be less disruptive, but if for some reason that happens to come really quickly, we could potentially do it. But absolutely by next school year, new labs will be there.
Awesome, thank you.
Yeah. Thanks.
All right, further discussion? All right, we're only voting on 905, because it's the only motion.
Correct.
All right, with that in mind, all those in favor of the motion, signify by raising your right hand, saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes 5-0. Now to 906, I need a motion to approve.
I make a motion to approve 9.06, Kentwood High School CTE Computer Lab Replacement.
I second.
All right, any discussion? We pretty well went through that the last time through. All right, with that, I'm going to go ahead and call for the question. All those in favor of the motion, signify by raising your right hand, saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and the motion passes 5-0. All right, at this point, I'm going to raise a motion on 902 and ask Director Margel to make a statement.
Yes, due to a personal conflict of interest and out of abundance of caution, I'm recusing myself from the board's discussion and vote on the matter of 9.02, Kent Ridge High School Field Trip and Student Travel Authorization to Coeur d'Alene, Idaho. And I am going to step out of the room and ask Ms. Centello to notify me when this matter is concluded, and I will come back into the room at this time.
All right, and we're still going to need a motion to approve.
I move the nine point oh two, Kent Ridge High School field trip and student travel authorization, authorization to Coeur d'Alene, Idaho, be approved.
Second.
Alright, it's been moved and seconded, discussion. Alright, so this is an exciting opportunity for those students and, and obviously a great learning opportunity. Now, with that, is there any further discussion? Hearing that, I'll call for the question. All those in favor of Kent Ridge field trip under nine oh two, signify by raising your right hand and saying aye.
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 Aye, and the motion passes four zero. Alright, and we still have two things coming up, and the gift acceptance.
Right.
Have you had a chance to read that? Alright, chair would entertain a motion on nine twelve gift acceptance.
I move that we approve gift, nine point one two, gift acceptance.
Second.
Okay, now, discussion.
I just wanted to make sure that we always recognize those who donate to the well-being of our students and never take it for granted. And I just wanna make sure that every time we get this chance, we thank them. Those, that Sunrise PTA that donated two thousand two hundred and seven dollars of books and resources. That, that is something that the, the school needs, and, and sometimes, you know, it falls on the shoulders of the teachers, and so the PTA to do that, it's really remarkable. So, we always wanna make sure that they know that we appreciate them.
Can I ask a question, though? Usually, these are pretty specific, but under Sinekell Elementary PTA, they donated five thousand dollars for needs of school. Usually, we get something a little bit more descriptive. Do we know what exactly those are?
I think I could ask Mr. Rarick to see if he might be able to tell us. We may not, but we'll see if he can. Mr. Rarick.
I'm sorry, can I get you to repeat the question?
Well, Sinekell PTA donated five thousand dollars, and a donation is for us as needs of school. Do we know what specifically that is?
Yeah, so when the, when a donation comes in, and it's meant to be generic, that's the phrase that's used. So if they give the school a greater latitude and flexibility, which they can do, then we don't adorn it with additional language.
Got it, thank you.
I mean, so is this for everything? They can just say whatever they need?
Yeah, there's some limits.
Right.
But as distinct from somebody who donates money to us and says, this is for playground equipment.
Right.
Or this is for, as opposed to empowering the principal of the building later to make some decision.
Thank you.
And just point of information, Sinekell is a high-needs.
Yes. I hope.
I hope.
There you go.
Yes.
I like that.
Alright.
We're learning, we're learning.
Absolutely. Correction.
With that, the chair would like to go ahead, if there's no more comment, and wish to collect a vote on nine twelve gift acceptance. All those in favor of the motion signify by raising your right hand and saying aye.
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 Five zero. Alright, now that takes us to nine fifteen, and the Director Benno raised a question on that, so I'm gonna turn to.
Thank you, President Clark. I'm gonna ask Mr. Heath, who is with us on Zoom, to help us with that question, so if you can repeat that, it's just, I think it was.
I just don't know what nine fifteen is, because it's not in my paperwork, so I don't know.
Got it.
It was added to the agenda, but you're correct, there's no description. It's the Kent School Foundation enrichment grants acceptance.
Mr. Heath.
Yeah, thank you, President Clark, members of the board, Superintendent Vella. I believe that Suzie Whitlock, Executive Director of Student Family Support Services, is in the audience today and may be able to answer that question.
Mr. Heath, she is not, she left, so that's why, sorry, I know you cannot see that, but yeah.
Okay. What I, what I know of this is that the Kent Schools Foundation, you know, one of their sole purposes is to, to raise money for use in, in schools. And so there was a approval earlier in the year in which grant, they were, we basically gave authorization for them to give these grants. They give them in cycles. And this was, there was a cycle in the fall, and then this is kind of the spring cycle. Teachers put in requests based on their needs, and then they read those requests, and then. So, yeah, it is a grant, it's kind of like a grant, but it's a little different from the grant, because the sole purpose of the organization really is to support schools in the Kent School.
President Clark, we have a member of the committee in the room, Allison Johnson. Could we possibly ask her to come up and speak to that issue? She's well aware of what's going on with that committee. Would you feel comfortable doing that, Allison?
Did we move and seconded already? We haven't made a motion.
Oh, can I make a motion?
Sure.
Alright, I move that we accept nine point one five Kent Schools Foundation grant.
Second.
Okay, go ahead now.
My name's Allison Johnson, I'm the Vice President of the Kent Schools Foundation. This grant was actually a King County money that was given to the, to the Kent Schools Foundation. It's fifty thousand dollars to help our schools, and it was a Title I school, so. We do have another grant ending on March thirty-first, because we did spend all the money, so, another thing, but we did do six schools, I think, because that was part of the delivery, which. So anyway, it was really neat to go to the schools and see all the stuff that they're gonna be doing, so. That was, it is a King County money that came from David Up the Grove. That's, it's not really our regular grants, so that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, with that, is there further discussion?
No, I, I just wanna mention that fifty thousand bucks is quite a bit of dump into our schools, and thank you, King County Council, and, and Council Chair Dave Up to Grove for that, and for Kent Community Foundation, for being the fiscal agent to do that. Thank you so much.
I believe there was also a partnership with Boeing in there, and love seeing the community partners with our business community too, and then, again, reiterate, Dave Up the Grove and King County. I just especially love seeing all of these schools, but Springbrook put in many different requests, and as somebody that did my elementary education at Springbrook Elementary, and have had some great opportunities recently to go visit there, and the great administration, and kids that go there, it's just, it's fun to see. So, yes, I'm super excited to, and thankful for the work.
Alright, further discussion? Hearing that, I'll call for the question. All those in favor of approval of nine fifteen Kent School Foundation grant, raise your right hand, saying aye.
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 Aye, and the motion passes five zero. Alright, that takes us to section ten. There are six items on the informational section. Anybody, any comments moving along? That takes us to final communication from the audience.
Ms. Zantello, don't believe we've already recorded.
President Clark, members of the board, and Superintendent Vella, there are no additional comments this evening. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Alright, with that, it's board reports, and I'll start with Director Margel.
And my computer literally just shut off about four seconds ago with all of my notes on it, because I did not plug it in. So, normally, I like to be within three minutes, but we're gonna go a little off memory here today, so please give me a little consideration on this one. First thing I would like to comment on is School Employee Retirees Week. Shout out to my amazing mother-in-law, who is a retired Kent School District teacher. She started off as a substitute and then retired her career as a kindergarten teacher at Fairwood Elementary after thirty years of being in the district, and just love the community that she is surrounded by, by the other retirees of Kent School District. It's a great group of people. And just love, there was a comment in the declaration about continuing their participation within the district. My mother-in-law goes and teaches art in my son's classroom, along with her other grandkids' classrooms, and I know our other retirees also are a huge part of making our schools run, and so shout out to that. Thank you again to communities and schools, King County and Boeing for all of the donations that we had. Fifty thousand dollars is a lot of money. Thank you very much. This, let's see, wow, okay. This is embarrassing trying to read my notes here, sorry about this. Okay, busy, busy last couple of weeks. We met about our budget priorities, and I love a good budget, so I'd love to see more ability to have income on the budget, so love hearing the bills that we're hearing from our legislative. But talking about our budget priorities is, that was something that we did this last week, and fantastic. Also met with the Covington City Council. I thought that, hearing some of the, a particular interest to me was talking about the joint use of KSD facilities for sports programs with the city of Covington, and kind of the overlap that we have on so many different priorities. Let's see, I also got to go and watch the musical at Northwood, Descendants. Fantastic first in-person musical that they have done, post-pandemic. I'm just so excited to see the work there. Oh, that's what I missed right here, it says middle school. These tied together. The middle school also, last week, had their sixth graders come up, and as they're learning about what it's going to be like next year for middle school. My husband and my son got to go to that, along with a lot of other sixth graders throughout the entire district, and tonight is the night that our fifth graders also got to go up and hear about middle school next year. I am so excited at so much work that's happening, both in our middle schools, and then also in our elementary schools, to get our students prepared, so when they can go into middle school next year. Yes, it's a big change. Yes, it's a big change for every student that goes from elementary school to middle school. But I really do feel like we are doing a good job in preparing our students to make that transition. Change is hard, but we're going to help with the tools along the way, because our students can do hard things, and they're going to do a great job. I also was able to attend the Kent Ridge Choir concert and fundraiser, and it was a spaghetti dinner prepared by the Culinary Arts Program, which did an amazing job, and not just serving, and not just preparing it, but also serving it. And they were fantastic. The choir always is fantastic, and was happy to be able to support that. Looking forward to Goal Three meeting this week around equitable systems and environments, and continuing on our conversation about budget priorities. And that is the end of my report, not even close to three minutes, I'm so sorry.
Alright, Director Benno.
Yes, I'm gonna start with kudos. Thanks for Kentwood students for being here and bringing your comments. I always think it's great to hear what you say, so I always appreciate, and thank you again for bringing your concerns. And thanks for Music for Life for being here and letting us know a little bit about the program. You know, I was thinking about this, and I was like, instrument repair, I know there's a lot of schools in Washington that do instrument repair as CTE programs. So, as always, I'm glad Lori's sitting here, so I can kind of put that out there. What a great partnership that would be to do instrument repair and partner with Music for Life, and then support the instruments, because I know that was a concern brought from one of our students in the past. So, nothing to do with here, I went to an IB meeting in Pasco, yay. I took, I took students for a CTE, FCC LA competition in Wenatchee, that was exciting. I have one student who gets to go to national in fashion construction. She made her dress for Wento Formal and presented it, and it was very popular, so it's awesome.
Nice.
We met with the city of Covington, City Council. I was absent from the last policy budget priorities, but of course, I did my homework, but I did it late, sorry, it was submitted, though, so I did do my work. I'm going to the bond meeting tomorrow at Mill Creek, because I can walk there, and that'll be easy for me. My strategic planning Goal One meeting starts on Monday, virtually, so I was a little disappointed I'm not gonna get food, since all my meetings are virtually.
That's not good.
You can.
Right. I said, I mentioned last time I'm going to this, National School Board Association Conference in Orlando. Next week, we're supposed, I'm supposed to have a policy meeting with you all, but I don't think I can go, because I think I'm supposed to lead a union meeting, so I'll let you all know for sure. And I know we have a joint meeting, I keep laughing at joint meeting, but that's a whole different thing with the city of Kent coming up. So, I do wanna talk about something serious. I was doom scrolling the other day on my phone, and Lizzo popped up. I love Lizzo, I love listening to her, and then the articles from the ADL, and it was about intent versus impact, so I'm gonna talk about that a little bit today. Because this article went in and talked about intent is what we made, and this was again from the ADL, the Anti-Defamation League, intent is what we mean by our words or actions. Impact is how those words or actions are experienced, felt, or understood by either the person they are directed to or others. The article stated that intent is always practice. We practice intent all the time. It happens in all aspects of our lives, but regardless of intent, or whether actions or words were purposeful, the targeted or effective person is still harmed. The harm doesn't go away when something goes out there. So, that's why it's critical that we need to prioritize impact, not just intent, and acknowledge harm that was caused. And one of the things that the article kind of talked about was not having background knowledge can cause us to harm others unintentionally, but privilege can also be a factor. It's a privilege to not have to be concerned about or consider the impact of our words, especially on marginalized identity groups, for those identity groups for which we hold privilege, we may not see, understand, or feel harm in those groups, because it doesn't affect our group, so we may not necessarily always think about that. And then, how did this relate to Lizzo? You say, well, because that's what happened. And as I was doom scrolling, and the reason why Lizzo popped up, because they, they talked about Lizzo being an example of intent versus impact. Lizzo released a song that had an ableist slur in it, and disability activists brought it forward to her attention, and she did not know it was a slur, and her lack of knowledge and sensitivity about ableist language caused her to use it unknowingly, and sometimes that might happen to us. And so as a result, it could cause harm, even if it wasn't intended. The impact is still there, the slurs still cause harm. So when Lizzo was given that feedback about her offensive lyric, she listened to the people of the disability activists reflected on her actions, and then she re-released the song, minus the slur in it. And she said, and she quoted, "I have been hurt by many words used against me, so I understand the power words can have, whether intentionally or in my case, unintentionally." Lizzo acknowledged, whether intentional or not, she caused harm, and then took steps to repair that harm. She prioritized the impact rather than her intentions. And to me, that was so strong, and I feel like sometimes, as adults, we don't necessarily think about impact. We think about, oh, that wasn't my intention, I didn't mean to, that was an accident, it was a, I didn't want to do that. But then, we don't always think about that we actually did do that harm. And so then, then we're done, and they're like, well, sorry, but then that group, when we said those words, are still harmed. And so, the article goes on talking about different ways that we can focus on impact, and how we can focus on the impact of things, rather than intent, because that's what we normally focus on, and it's like, the intentions, those are the things that we live in. So I always wanna make sure that we are always our best examples for our students and our staff, and, you know, after reading that, it kind of took me out of my negative mood, because I, I was being vulnerable. I was, I was not, I was not feeling okay the last couple of days. And so, and coming in today and thinking about this, I was like, wow, okay, this, Lizzo always makes it feel good, and just hearing this also makes it feel really better, also knowing that there's a lot of work to do. So, that's what, that's what I've been sitting on today, and hope that we can continue to always be the best examples to students and staff in our district, and thank our staff and our students for all the work that they do. And one of my goals, I still wanna meet with the GSAs at Kentwood and Kent Ridge, so I hope that they'll invite me again, because it was great talking to them before, and I wanna do it again. And that is my report.
Alright, Director Hamada.
Well, first of all, I wanna address your kids again, because, did you see how fast we, we, we got computers to CTE today? Just because you showed up? I mean, faster than the speeding bullet, right? Come then, you know? Well, maybe not, maybe that's kind of like a pipe dream, so I'll get off that. But thank you for coming, and all our partners, we need partners. There is so much need out there in our world, that the only way we're gonna get through it is to work together. And I appreciate everybody in our, even beyond, that are in this room or giving all this stuff, and that Kent is a very generous community. There's some very, very good people in here. I just wanna highlight a couple of things. On March fourteenth, I testified in person on the House Education Committee, like I said, in Olympia, on SB fifty-three eleven, trying to get money for our kids. March fifteen, we. March 15, we worked on policies. March 16, I had a wonderful breakfast for Community and Schools of Kent. There was great attendance and inspirational stories from the kids. And I want to thank Dr. Behringer, he's done a lot of work in that area with his partnership, and he emceed, and, and the staff of 50, I believe, I understood 50 of our staff attended that breakfast, and they were sitting all around the room. So that shows we're not only care about what we do, we care about all our partners. We're working within our schools, and I've been privileged, I was privileged to be a mentor in the community of schools for seven years. I do appreciate that program very much. On the 19th, we held a joint meeting with our partner, City of Covington, and their council and city manager, and we both shared a lot of what we were doing. And even though I live in Covington, I learned something about what's going on in Covington that I wasn't totally aware of, a few things there. And, and again, I'm going to emphasize the importance of our partnership in using the fields. Reagan Bowlen, our city manager, had a number, and I honestly couldn't remember it in my head, of all the activity, all the kids of Covington that had been on the fields in the Kent School District. It was pretty overwhelming. And how much it's going to be beneficial to get our fields in all our schools, for all our kids, to get our fields up to date, not just for our school activities, but for all the people that use our fields. March 20th, I attended my very first Strategic Planning Committee meeting, and we were off to a good start. I want to recognize that Carol Cleveland was in the room tonight. She did not speak, it was her 50th birthday, but she was here tonight. So our staff, it really cares about this school district. I want to leave you with a quote that I started when I first got on the board, that I want us to keep in mind. Government institutions exist because the community feels there is a need to be developed for the common good. When decision-makers of those institutions fail to listen to their constituents, they fail. I want us all to keep that in mind. And I want another, because of a lot of things that happened this week, another quote, that I think, again, I'm over and over seeing this in our world, that we, we can always give something, even if it's only kindness, and that's a quote from Anne Frank. And I think in a lot of areas in our speech, in what we do every day, it doesn't take a whole lot to be kind. And I think we need to revisit that, myself included. So thank you very much. That concludes my report.
All right, that's, I guess, my turn. I just want to give this kid's round of applause, please. You hanged out here with all this old people talk.
Old, speak for yourself.
And you sat through here and literally championed. Thank you, I appreciate you. You brought us things that you are concerned, and I'm going to make sure that, Superintendent, please make sure these things get done, because this kid's really came up and told us what they need. So thank you. That's how we get things done, and we appreciate, and we hope that many of you will come visit us and let us know what can we do to help, because all of us sitting here, we're sitting for you. We're here because we want to make sure you succeed in life, and so thank you for, for doing that. I also want to thank Kent Kids of, Kids at Hope, and we learned a lot tonight. Because a lot of times, words matter, and when we say matters, so what they taught, taught us is to make sure that we talk about the positivity of, of the things that we want to make sure the kids are achieving. So I appreciate that. We were able to visit or have a joint meeting with the City of Covington Council, which really also, I learned something, that we have to be ready for 1,700-plus families. And yes, we've done the planning to make sure that when we're doing border changes, that we will account for that, but it's still something that I was looking at and going, wow, that's, that's, that's a large number of families. I was able to attend the Mayor Dana Ralph's State of the City with Superintendent Vella, and it really opened our eyes, the, the relationship we have with the city and how we're making sure that our kids succeed. I want to thank Music for Life, because my kids have been there and really appreciated and learned so many instruments. And one year, my son decided that he wanted to do the flute. And it was, it was a challenge for him, but he went through it, and, and because of Music for Life, he was able to achieve that. So I appreciate, I also appreciate the fact that Kent Schools Foundation has always been there for the kids of Kent. So thank you, Allison, and what you guys do, appreciate it. We also met with the Strategic Plan, and we're championing, me and Director Hamada, we're championing the Goal Number Two, which is student and family engagement. And we decided that we want, when we, when we saw what was really happening, it was a good thing that we're being engaged and we're engaging the families to be part of this process, so that was really a fresh. I will always close this by saying thank you to the staff of KSD. I'm never going to get tired of thanking you, because of all the things that we achieve in this large district, all the challenges, it takes dedicated people who care about these kids and show up every day, even though they are not 100% themselves, but they show up for these kids. So I want you to know, the Board appreciates you, and, and we want to continue telling you that, because that's what leaders do, they thank their people. Thank you very much. That concludes my report.
Thank you. First of all, just a quick reminder, the Communities and Schools Breakfast was last Thursday, and it was really great to finally get together in person. And if any of the viewing audience wonders about the primary objective in communities and schools, it's a support system for the schools, and they're always looking for adults who would act as mentors to students. And typically, that involves just creating a personal connection and trying to support a particular student. It varies in terms of its timing, roughly once a week, and sometimes less, of course, but they're always looking for people that want to do that little extra mile of basically listening to kids, because that's really what it comes down to. The second part, I'm going to talk to the students. That very last speaker on the open comment, Tamara Lucretia, was directing her comments at me. What she was offended by was my use and trying to summarize some actions that had taken place in terms of the development of the boundaries that we're going through at this point in time. And I use the phraseology of a particular community, if you will, a group of families that were Somali, that lived in a particular housing project, though I never stated where that was, and referred to it as a Somali colony. That was a true reaction, and, and so I apologize to people that were offended by that. However, just so you understand how those things happen, I'm a former Kent City Council member, and I was a, I finished my career in teaching and had 14 years at Kent Ridge High School. But because of that particular connection, and knowing the makeup of the student body, and knowing the increase of immigrants and refugees that were coming in, there was a crisis with housing down in the Kent Valley, where we had, the group that usually deals with that is actually a collection of nonprofits, and they are simply umbrellaed under the term Refugee Forum. And because there had been a problem, I had specifically gone and attended meetings with Refugee Forum, and as a consequence, was taken a specific look at Somalis living on the valley floor in Kent. And in the process, there are some challenges that are not covered by government policy. So these nonprofits basically try and support various groups that come through, and they don't come through in a smooth process. When the State, Department of State actually literally takes and brings a group, it could be any size. So it could be a family of four, it could be two families, and of course, it could be a group of 50. Now, the, the point that I'm, I'm trying to get at was, in trying to support them, I actually went and visited those families in that particular housing project, because some of the problems that had grown up included, they were not close, even now, they are not close to any standard grocery store. So transportation, just to get food, is a problem, because refugees do not tend to drive. Very clearly, if they do, it's because they got to support a family member who's working. So mom is trying to deal with the support of the kids, and how are they supposed to get there? Dad has got the car and is at work. And so, we approached King County, and they started giving bus passes, so at least they could use public transportation. But in that particular housing project, even that isn't a particular blessing, because the buses don't run to the grocery store, and they don't run even close to them. So trying to help the Refugee Forum folks trying to deal with that was where I got involved in that. Now, the reason I bring that up is for my colleagues here, you may recall, in the discussion of the boundary changes, I mentioned that, in fact, there was difficulty of taking a particular segment of people that were on the valley floor closer to Kent Elementary, and they were being re-designated to go up to Scenic Hill. Now, that actually wasn't news for them, because they'd been doing some of that. But I, when I tried to explain that, suddenly, I, now after the event's over, because it was a summary statement, I've got people that confuse the difference between dealing with immigrants and dealing with refugees. And there's a big difference. Refugees typically are brought in under great stress, and not surprisingly, with great frequency, and certainly in these recent times that we're living in, if you just take the two groups that have been the heaviest in terms of folks that we're dealing with, it's been, of course, Afghans and Ukrainians. Well, they're coming from violence, and that means trauma, and that means that there are all kinds of concerns. When I was dealing with the Somalis, I was dealing with a kid that was still running around on crutches, because he'd had a leg blown off on a landmine. But the apartment was on the second floor, and there's no elevator, so you fill in the blanks. So I, I just mentioned that, is I'm sorry for any of that I offended, but I just want you to know, it's because I actually have been working with that group, and I didn't use the right terminology. But with that, and I have nothing else to add, so with nothing more to go on, at 8:59, we're adjourned. And I believe we have some students that want to take a picture of the...